Work session for the events is the next item.
Main Street, Main Street.
Did I miss that page?
Yeah.
Oh, there it is, okay.
But we are gonna move that.
Yeah, okay, I thought so. I thought I remembered a text about it. Okay, great. So Main Street G1 is the Main Street Workshop. We're going to discuss event guidelines for uh, future special events held on city property. So is this?
I'm gonna introduce this and then Wendy's here for questions. Denise has been real active in putting this together as well. So what's before you deny, we came up with a set of guidelines. These are bare bone guidelines. This is what we believe is a good start for this work session because we believe it lays out what we kind of need to see happen. But we also, we also know that there's some other things that council probably would like to see. So this is, I consider this the bones and we want your feedback so we can actually flesh this out. If we miss something, you might like it the way it is because what we tried to do was try not to make it very restrictive. So, so we can make it very open, but we also tried to make it accomplish what we needed accomplished. Which was to establish that procedures so that we can actually move forward and have everybody be treated the same. And just as we look through this, one of the things that we really needed to look at it and we really wanted to question was, how many events do you wanna have? You know, I know like Mr. Fritz's comment, you know, leaving the window for applying from November to and December in there. Well, we had a reason for that, but we also needed to know how many events y'all really wanted to have. Do you wanna have one event per month? Do you wanna have one event per weekend? Do you wanna have one event every day of the week? I don't know. So, so we've got to establish that. We've established that a special event's gonna be a hundred people or more that requires the road closing or alcohol in public. So that definition's in there. So now we're just working on how many, how many do you really wanna have? Is, and then we also wanna look at the current fee structure and see what you think. I know there's been a lot of talk differentiating between for profit or not profit. We did not put that in there because for staff, we spend the same amount of time whether it's for profit or not for profit. So I know that that has been a discussion point. So if y'all would like to discuss that further tonight, we would love to have feedback to add to this if that's what you want us to do. Of course, like, also like Mr. Fritz mentioned, election weekend, is that weekend off limits? If it is, we'd like to put that within the policy. If it's not, then let's, you know, we'll entertain somebody actually doing an event that weekend if somebody wants to. Currently, alcohol is only available, or we only have an ordinance that allows open containers on the square. We do have other venues for rent such as the community center. We have Groff Park that's available for different things. And so we were wondering, you know, do you want to open that up and say there's a men's beer league softball that wants to come out and do something at Groff Park? Do we wanna allow that kinda stuff? The other thing that we wanted to ask within that same realm of things is the museum. The museum is a great space to hold small receptions. Do we wanna allow the museum to be a rental space? I know we've had a reception in there. The Chamber Office is out of there. They've, they've had a small reception and it had a little band and some hors d'oeuvres and some alcohol and it was a really nice reception. So do we wanna make that available? And then also, how do you want us to handle simple street closures? Just like also Mr. Fritz mentioned, Western Suns is a private venue that wants to do a street closure that's not a text dot street. Does that need to be filled out through a special event form? Or does that need to be handled administratively where we say, oh yeah, you know, there's certain guidelines, you meet all those guidelines. So administratively, we can go ahead and approve this permit without having to bring it to council every time. Just real quick because Mr. Fritz just brought everything up and so just to touch real quick on what, on our thinking behind this, this window of when to apply. We thought if we had this window, it would, number one, it would give us time to plan. So from, the window would be for the following year. So it would be from, actually from March. So your events would be held from March through that, that following end of February. So you would be, the first two would be kinda grouped in. So if you're gonna put in an application for 2024, you would wanna apply between November and December of '23. That gives us plenty of time for council to be able to look at those in advance, to be able to bring it to council and more than enough time to get an approval. That approval would include this, you know, the alcohol or the street closures or whatever at that point. And then that would give Wendy and the event organizer however long they needed to work on making sure we had everything in place and we had the safety plan in place and we had, and then Wendy would take over from there. So she would be a little more highly involved than she is now. But she would also, but we would be, have that direction from council from the beginning. What we want to avoid is last minute somebody coming in and saying, hey, we, you need thirty days for a street closure. There were thirty-five days out. Can we hurry up and get this on the agenda? Can we move forward on this or do this? When that's really not, that's really poor planning for everybody involved. For the city, it really, it makes it difficult on us to be able to either get our police officers for security purposes, to get everybody together for, to come up with a security plan to, and so what we're trying to prevent is poor planning on everybody's part, including ours. And so this is why we have asked for that window. We modeled this plan that we have after McKinney, after Denton, and after Ennis. And we use those three cities because they have successful events, both private, you know, third-party events and city events. And they're Main Street cities. We did not include Salina when we were looking at this because Salina is not a Main Street city. They have a downtown, they have a downtown association, all that kinda stuff. But they're not an actual Main Street city like we are. So we try to model it after other Main Street cities. Okay, and I'm gonna take a breath now and y'all can ask any questions you might have.
Wonderful. And for the community, what this is, is this year we have had more people coming out that are private people, entities wanting to have events on the square. So this is growth, good growth. This is a great opportunity that's been presented. So, but we just need to make sure that we have guidelines being the proper little government that we are. Making sure that we have guidelines so that everybody has the same understanding as to how we move forward. So I did have some questions and comments, but does, does anybody else wanna kick it off? Do you have any questions and comments?
I do.
Councilman?
Sorry, I raised my hand, Brian.
I was looking this way.
Now, just a question for your first question. How many per month to, you know, I asked the city as far as your resources. What, how does that tax you guys? I mean, that would not be-
You know, so what the plan is, Chief Marx is putting a plan together for public safety as far as officers. Well, that, I mean, that does require off-duty officers to come in. So that is taxing on us, especially with, we have so few. He's putting a plan together. We can use, utilize some software that, that kinda has a call tree that has our officers at the beginning and then if we can't find any, it'll branch out to other areas, you know, maybe PPISD, maybe Aubrey, maybe around, and see if we can backfill that way. But that's only for police. For fire EMS, it's taxing as well because, you know, part of the safety plan a lot of times is to have that. And I think Chief Hudson's in here, so I haven't talked to him as much as I had Chief Marx on this, but once again, that's gonna be off-duty people that we've gotta come, we've gotta find to come in and that's why we have an overtime rate basically for them. Public works is the same way. We've only got so many. So if we were to have an event every weekend, we would be asking those people to be here every weekend on top of their regular hours plus whatever that amount of time is. And it would become taxing on us.
I thought on the guidelines, I saw something about like you can have your own people doing trash and security. Did I read that wrong? Or do we have, do they have to use, because it says there should be a minimum of two licensed bonded security officers and one active duty Texas peace officer on site for every one hundred attendees. The security officers should be wearing some sort of distinctive apparel that makes them readily identified as security detail for the event.
Yeah, so, so that is, that isn't either or. So that is in there. So you can have two per one hundred if there's security officers in there. But we, our preference, and we didn't put this in there, our preference in talking with Chief Marx is that they use our guys. And so, and that, because you, you really do wanna get a licensed peace officer.
Right.
Because if it gets rowdy or something, you wanna be able to have the radio, you wanna be able to have the arresting power, you wanna be able to do that. Where a security guard doesn't have that, they're not gonna be, they're gonna have to call nine-one-one to get that back up.
So maybe, should we have something like saying something to the effect of, for the first one hundred, you have to have one of our police officers and then you can have security guards for the next two, three, four hundred? That way it's not as taxing number one, but then-
I'm gonna kick that one across the room over there to Sergeant Green. I don't know how, how does that, how does that affect the, the, the peace officer that's actually working to, I mean, because he wouldn't have supervision over hired security, so it would probably complicate the situation if it was just me thinking about it, but I'll kick it that way.
Yeah. My understanding is officers are always looking for additional hours. Do you think having an event, if, if we did an event every weekend, is that a good thing for you guys? Because you guys can get more hours here locally? Or is that a hard thing because now it creates more work? Yeah. Yeah, cuz I, I have a lot of friends that are police officers and they're always doing side, side gigs. And so if they can do it here as opposed to having to go somewhere else, I think would be a good thing. Yeah, okay.
Are we seriously considering that there would be an event every weekend?
They're asking if, how often should we have events?
My concern about having, having too many events. So I'm all for events. I love it. I love those events. I go to Farmer's Market because it's easy to do. The issue I see is not necessarily the security and the public safety. The issue is, do we have too many events? Do we have some events that are not good events or they're not, you know, we don't have that many vendors or that many people don't show up? People outside of Pilot Point that happen to go to that one event, they're not gonna come back. I'd rather have less events that are fantastic events where people wanna come back. That's my personal preference.
And if part of the reason for having events is to promote and benefit merchants, not everybody wants to have to experience that benefit every weekend. I mean, there are merchants who don't want to do that. And sometimes I think they feel pressured to do it.
Because I have a question or an item here. When we're setting the calendar and all that, I guess what we need to look at is how we classify the, the event that's happening. Is it a special event that's huge? Or is it like a smaller one, like a farmer's market, a mimosa, the other one, the mint julep? You know, I would say those are like, they don't require a lot of our resources and all that. So as far as, anyway, I would say that would be kinda the sprinkles around everything that we're looking at. And I guess, you know, really, that doesn't tax our maintenance or the streets and police does it as much as-
So, so in, in the, in the guidelines that we presented, it does, it does describe what a private event is. A private event is an event that has more than a hundred people that's requiring street closures or alcohol in public places where they're not typically going to, or I can't remember what all the depth, but it's right there. Wendy, can you read what a, a special event is out of the?
A temporary event or gathering, a temporary work for a common purpose under the direction or control of a person. Using grade, road races, bike rallies, block parties, haunted car parks, full of vessels, utilizing public property involves one or more of the following. Closing of a public street, blocking or restriction of public property, including public right-of-way. Sale of merchandise, food or beverages on public property, sale of alcohol beverages on public or private property where otherwise prohibited. Direction of the tenant or property on public property. Installation of a stage, man shells, trailer, van, or building, grandstand, or bleachers on public property where otherwise prohibited by ordinance. Placement of temporary informational signage. Please do not purchase, go for interventional identification or special events sign for banners in or over a public right-of-way or on public property where otherwise prohibited by ordinance.
Thank you.
So with that definition, for instance, the mimosa mosey that the chamber puts on, we actually had the discussion, me, Denise and Wendy. By this definition, if you're okay with this definition, we don't believe that would fit the definition of a special event because they only sell fifty tickets. They're not doing anything on public property. Everything is within the vent, within the chamber members spaces in their stores. And so they would not have to go through the process of getting a special events permit for that event.
Also, also on those particular events, they piggyback off of the market. So they kinda complements each other. They just piggyback. So it makes it real simple and clean.
Councilman Hightman, you have-
Yeah, so where I was going with that is, okay, we'll have private events, but we also have the city like Bonnie and Clyde. We have Christmas on the square, scare on the square, which are a little more substantial than some of the other ones. So I guess when, you know, as we receive the applications and look at the calendar, I guess city functions will probably trump everything that's out there. And then we kinda feed in and again, get to Councilman Ambrosia's, you know, you can get so many of them that they lose their-
Saturate.
You saturate and you just lose the oof, you know, so.
Well, and I don't want us to lose the overall focus because these are guidelines not just for the square, but the community center, the park, you know, I think that this is gonna open up opportunities for people that have asked about Groff Park. Hey, can I do something there? And in the past, it's been like, I don't know, contact the city. And I don't think we've really had an answer. So.
We've had a rental fee, but we don't have, we've never had an actual policy or guidelines. And so, and then just to touch real quick on, on the city events, once again, we are asking for this application process to be in November and December because that gives us plenty of time to get our budget set and our events from October out of the way. And with, of course, when our budget is set, we're also approving the events that we're putting on through the Main Street at, through the budget and, and doing that. So it gives us plenty of time to work through that budget process, to set those events, to have those dates for the future, the next year's calendar, and move, and move on. So it gives us that, that plenty of time to be able to do that. That a way, when we do get those applications, the council can look at those dates and say, well, we've got one, the, the weekend right prior that's a Bonnie and Clyde, or we've got whatever. And so do we wanna have two in a row? Or you can, and we can work with, with the, the person wanting to put the events on that, that way.
Councilman Hightman.
And then the other thing is, is with that, once the calendar's set, then all of our merchants in town know what's gonna be out there. And I know I was talking with one yesterday and they were saying that if they know, they can go to market and make sure that they're stocked appropriately for that season, for that event and all of that. So, I mean, I think it can be a win for everybody.
And that, and that's another reason we were trying to get it all over with at one time. Also in consideration of those, those people that have places around the square or wherever, if they do or don't want an event, they only have to worry about coming to one council meeting to, to either go for it or go against it. They always, they'll always know, the first council meeting in January is when they're approving the events for the year. We know we don't want the one in December, so we're gonna come and we're gonna say, we don't want it then, you know. And so they'll, well, we want three, the three that are coming in the springtime, whatever, you know, but they'll have that opportunity and won't have to keep watching the agenda to see those events.
Councilman Hightman.
And then the other thing is, is I know this is just for discussion and all of that, but it might be that since we do have the museum and the senior centers, senior center, the ball fields and all that, maybe we look at that as a profit generating for our budget and all that. And then-
And I should have, I should have, it's really, and really, we probably need to talk in, into another type of discussion. We need to rotate this, move this into where we also need to have a more robust rental discussion because a special event is gonna be a hundred or more, where the museum doesn't have a CO that'll allow a hundred people. So we need to look at also, you know.
With this definition, the museum doesn't fall into it.
Right. So, but since we were talking about alcohol and how that TABC license is gonna work and how we're gonna do those things, we wanted to bring that up as well. So if we wanna expand it, if we can, we can bring another policy back that's gonna have a more in-depth rental procedure. Because I know Jason, the last thing he wants is to go in after a rental and have beer bottles all over the banisters and have to, you know, clean that up.
Councilman Cummings, did you-
Yeah, I'm gonna back up just a little bit when we're talking about the police and, and security. I think we should be using our guys, our guys only. Our guys can arrange for additional people to be vetted. And the other thing I wonder about is, heaven forbid, somebody gets out there, they get hurt. These vendors got insurance. How is the council covered? Are we covered if they come out of the wall here, everybody?
So, the tort claims act would cover the city in, in the event of that type of claim.
Okay.
And depends on the specific facts, but as a general rule, there would not be liability. And any special event permit would require that the host carry the insurance and indemnify the city in the event of a claim.
I have a question on the insurance. Do you think we oughta have a, like a one million with a two million aggregate?
So my recommendation would be that we consult with a risk management group and determine that. I'm not an insurance coverage person, but we have, I have met with TML previously and talked with their risk folks and they do recommend certain coverage amounts. We would make sure that that's a part of the permit application.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Denise or Wendy, we have our insurance requirements based on our TML recommendation from our, because since there are general liability coverage people, right? Is that? I believe that's the way, I believe that was the route we took, but I, I would have to double check.
But then we need to go ahead and layer alcohol on top of that.
So alcohol is a separate issue. We are not liable for social host over-service, which would be the typical claim for alcohol-related injuries.
And the holder of a liquor license or anyone selling alcohol on the square must carry an additional one million liquor license or income policy as well that will be due upon us receiving the deed.
I think, I think the questions that you all asked to consider are really good. I do wanna make sure though that, you know, this, this is an opportunity for us to partner with the community. And I don't wanna get so restrictive that we're not servicing the community. Like, one of the things that I marked here was the parades. You know, our homecoming parade here for Pilot Point is a huge thing, huge. Almost sacred cow status. And so am I to understand that because they're doing a parade and it is absolutely more than a hundred people, then they're gonna have to come up with now a hundred and whatever dollars for the fee?
Yes, ma'am. And, and with that parade also, because that, that goes down Washington and Liberty, which are text dot roads. And so we have to make sure that we have safety plans in place and we have to be able to review those and we have to get those closed with, with text dot and approved. So that's why we are putting that out in advance. Now, once again, if there is something that you want to do for profits, nonprofits, schools, churches, whatever, please let us know now because that's what, that's one of the things that we're wanting to know. If, if you think that the school should have that fee waived, let us know now before we get this policy going. And then we come back in six months when they're asking for next year's parade and we're having to go, well, you know, you gotta pay us. Well, let's go to council and ask for, to change the policy, right?
Yeah, cuz like parades and it says road races, bike rallies, block parties, like right now, the, the group has a neighborhood grabbing gab or whatever. Eventually, that'll turn more than a hundred people. So now are they gonna be now subject to?
At that point, yes. Once they, once they grow beyond a hundred people, they would have, they would be required to have a safety plan. They would be required to have all of those things in place.
Yeah. Well, it says here, if you have even a tent, if you have a sale of food or merchandise, it's, I mean, these are, these are very, I just wanna make sure that we're not losing sight of, it's an opportunity to partner with the city and as we continue to grow, again, we're not just looking at the square. We're looking at Groff Park, we're looking at the community center, we're looking at, I mean, a lot of things. If I sit here and look at each particular thing-
Jason, what is the, what is the CO occupancy limit on the, the community center? I said that earlier because we don't allow alcohol, so it's kinda, but it's actually not gonna fall under special event either, so.
Okay, so just, this is gonna be Groff Park, the square.
The bigger, the bigger public open spaces.
I think a lot of the questions that I'm hearing are really drawing distinction, the distinction between a rental policy for public facilities and what are true special events. And maybe that's where the issue divides. Because you can rent the park and you may have a hundred people there, but that's not really a special event where everyone is invited. If it's a fiftieth anniversary party for your parents, you may have a hundred guests, but they are invited. It is not something intended to draw people from other communities into the, the town square. And so I think perhaps a rental policy could be helpful in distinguishing between rental of a facility and a special, a special event is not an invitation-type event. It is, there's marketing, there's PR.
So maybe that should be in there too, the definition, that it's, you're making a all-public invitation.
Where the public is invited.
We changed the verb. We just go where it says a temporary public event, the public event.
Yeah, public being key there.
Where the public is invited.
Well, you went to the detail of saying one or more of the following. You just take one as being erection of a tent on public property and basically you're a special event.
That's right.
That's where I got confused.
Me too. I had that. Why is that on there? A tent? One tent?
I don't think that means a soccer tent. I think that means a tent intended for, to host an event.
Because this is a tenor canopy and I'm like, so if I go put my tent in Groff Park, now I'm having an event?
No.
Okay. That's what it says.
I think that's a distinction between a rental policy and a special event policy.
Excuse me, I have something. I, I think we should be really careful on events that we do come forward on voting days. I feel a little strong about that, that we don't have special events if it's a voting day. And it's gonna be hard if we have to have a special day of elections, but I think we need to be careful that we don't go there.
So then that has to be May and November? Because you all just put May here and November's also a, a voting day, so.
I gotta keep, Chief's already texted me one time to use the mic because he can't hear occasionally, so.
See?
So I, so I, I'm gonna remember to pull this mic.
Last time saying they couldn't hear.
So election day, yes, ma'am. So May is, is on a Saturday, so that is when events are gonna be held. November's on a Tuesday, so in our little Brian's, we just didn't think anybody was really gonna have a, an event on a Tuesday, but we would definitely wanna add that. Yes, ma'am. You're correct.
Well, and, and I disagree with you. I don't think that, to Mr. Fritz's point, you know, if people have to drive, they're gonna drive to go vote. I don't think that we should stop all events. Because again, I think that's very minded for right now because we're a small community, but as we continue to grow, like, we're not just making rules for right now, right here. We're making rules for, you know, when we become fifty thousand members, so, or citizens.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Well, we can change it at that time. We're- Well, we can change it at that time, or, or move the voting.
Yeah, that, this is all based on the proximity of our voting.
Yeah, because that's what I was going to say, eventually the voting's not going to be there anymore.
I mean, if the voting's not there, then it's surely not an issue.
Are we, are we able to change where we vote?
Yes.
Rather than library, because that, that's the issue, is how close it is to the square. That, that's the issue.
That's exactly the issue.
Yeah.
And I want to see the, the blocked off, if there's only one way to get through there. That's what we had on the Cinco de Mayo, I was trying to say, and I'm not, I'm not for letting that happen.
Well, that and, I think we also have to consider if there's special elections. I mean, you know, if we have an event posted, you know, this time we had December 13th, was that a Saturday? I don't remember what day it was. But anyway, if there's a special election that's on a Saturday and there's an event already planned, we already said no event. So, do we cancel them 30 days before, after they've done all that work?
Yes, but according to the policy, they'd still have to pay the fee. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, that's, no.
I, no, I, I don't know. And, and that's why we needed to, we needed to get feedback from council, because I, I really don't know. I don't think we can plan for everything. We can't plan for thunderstorms, we can't plan for, you know, and so, I don't think we can plan for everything. And we're not, I, I think I've heard Brenda say before, we're not going to ever write a policy that covers everything.
Yeah.
And so, what we're just trying to do is focus on what we know. And we, you know, we know that, that, that first weekend of May, that first Saturday is going to be the local election. We know that Tuesday, the, the, in, in November is going to be the, the general election. So, I think, I mean, I don't, I don't even know what day primaries are on right now. So, I mean, we know that's coming up around the corner, you know, and so, I know we can't just, we can't plan for everything, but what we, let's just control what we know we can control for right now.
Excuse me, I, I thought we didn't have another building right now we could use to move the elections. I thought that was the problem, we don't have a facility.
I mean, it, for right now, but.
So, we're really getting into specifics. I think the policy question and the direction the staff is looking for is, do we want to have special events on election days? If the answer is no, because if I were the chairman of a political party in Denton County, I would file for four years on, you know, November, whatever. If, if the desire of the council is, look, we don't want to have special events on election days, let's leave it to the staff to figure out the details of how we accomplish that.
Good.
I think at this point, we are looking for some broad policy direction from the council so that we know how to revise what's in here.
Yep, good.
I don't think we should have.
I don't either.
Well, this dais has spoken already on that, so I think you have your answer.
So, I think that's a.
I do want to go back to a point Mr. Fritz also made, because I had that note also. I think having just November and December, especially for the first, and to your point, Councilman Heitzman, I think this is one of those policies that should come before the council every year, just to re-review it, especially after the first year, so we can tweak it, because I think it's going to be one of those that we need to tweak. I think for the first year, because people aren't going to know, because if this goes into effect, you're saying that they would have to have, whoever wants to do an event would have to have their application this November and December if they're going to have an event next year. So, that means we have to let the schools know, PTOs know, every organization in, in the city know, because if they don't get their application in, we're not going to accept it.
Right, but keep in mind, like Brenda said earlier, the difference between a special event and a rental. And so.
Right.
When we look at special events, we're looking at those, those, those parades. They know when the homecoming parade is, you know.
No, I'm saying, but they need to know.
Right, and so, we'll be able to discuss that. I mean, we'll, if this happens, we will do a media campaign to make sure that everybody is aware that we, that this policy has passed. We will make sure, and, and like I had said earlier, I, I believe that this window is, is really, in my opinion, is a generous window to say two months. I mean, one of my previous cities said, hey, you got 30 days, get us your applications, come make your presentation, and we'll let you know. I mean, and so, that, I mean, it was, that was how Hobbs did it. And so, two months, I think it's fine. And, and that's also why we went ahead and said that you're planning for those March through the February, because we know if we're taking an application in November, December, and you're wanting to have a January event, by the time council approves that event, you're not going to have time to plan that event. So, that's why we're asking to go from a March to February on that.
Well, and if it's about two months, then we do one month in November and one month in the spring, because I just don't think that this serves the community. I think that you're going to have, I know Pilot Point, you can put something in their bills, in their mailbox, on idle chatter, on Facebook, you can put it, a billboard on 377, and they'll still say, I had no idea. And so, I think it gives them, at least for the first year, an opportunity to say, oh, man, I missed the window in November. They get a chance in spring to put an application in.
And that's fine. Like I said, this is just for, we're just looking for direction. This is, this is what we thought would, this was our recommendation, and if y'all don't like it, then, hey, we're okay with that too.
Oh, I like it, I think y'all did good.
So, we'll fix it. We'll make sure we do it whatever y'all tell us to.
Well, and I, I do think at, at some point, because we cannot plan for everything, I was just sitting here trying to think of a hypothetical. Say, let's just say Taylor Swift has, is a huge supporter of the Juvenile Diabetes Foundation. Somebody finds out that she's going to be playing regionally, and she agrees to come and do a, an event on the square in Pilot Point. I believe you would make an exception to your November and February or March.
I wouldn't, but you don't want to.
Yeah. Well, I just pick, because that tour right now, I guess, is all I hear about.
Randy Tramm.
But what I'm trying to say is, it's a policy, you all are the council, and you can consider additional events. We can draft language that talks about the circumstances for that to occur, but to be able to consider four or five things for the year on your agenda that are considered regional, you know, big special events, is something that you ought to have them all on an agenda and be able to look at them next to each other and have a conversation about that. If something unique comes up, then I think we will have a policy that will allow you to deal with that.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't over-restrict ourselves where we wind up shooting ourselves in the foot with opportunities that come later. You know, if we have a new business that comes to the square, if the bank gets bought and they decide they want to do an event and we have nothing in March or April, I don't want to shoot us in the foot and say, oops, sorry, you missed November, December, we weren't here.
Well, it'll be up to Denise to negotiate that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know.
We would call that a grand opening.
Yeah, well, something. Councilman Dane, did you have something, sir?
I still have some interest in distinguishing between profit and nonprofit organizations, perhaps.
So, on that issue, let me just speak to one sort of legal issue. I can go on the Secretary of State website and form a nonprofit corporation today. There is a significant distinction between a nonprofit corporation and a 501(c)(3) or 501(c), pick another number, charitable organization designation by the IRS. And I would encourage you, when you are talking about nonprofits, to define which of those two things you mean.
501(c)(3) is what I mean.
Okay, or other federally designated charitable organization.
What are your thoughts on that, Councilman Dane?
When, I, I just think that, I personally think if the city's going to provide space, even on the square here, there's a cost to the city above and beyond what we charge for police protection, fire protection, and public works people. There's, they're wear and tear expenses. It, it costs us, and I don't think it ought to cost us for prof, for for-profit visit, businesses, enterprises, functions. I don't think it should cost the general citizenry. I think there needs to be an allowance for that.
So, the only thing I would say to that, I feel like if there's 400 people on, on the square, regardless if it's a nonprofit event or it's a profit event, there's 400 people on the square. And they're all paying, like, right now, as it stands, they're all paying the fees, they're paying for police, they're paying for trash, they're paying for utilities. So, are you saying that you would like to have the for-profits pay more for those 100 people than the nonprofits?
I think that there, there is an opportunity for grace in that regard, yes. Consideration. Because one is, the, the 501(c)(3)'s, what they're producing, they're giving back to the fire department, or purchased toward an ambulance, or something like that.
But I can tell, so I have a nonprofit, and I've also worked for companies that have for-profit. I can tell you, like, even the Cinco de Mayo, they gave $3,000 to the community, and they were able to do that back into the community. And that was, so if, is it more about, like, you want people to give back?
Well, you brought up the Cinco de Mayo, and my, what were the guidelines for that? Who got those? Who got the give back?
The company that sponsored it. So, Snag Development sponsored 3,000, well, firstly, it was $1,000.
No, where did, where did it go? How did it get back to the community? I know, what were the guidelines that were used? How was it publicized? I, I just.
The guidelines for giving away the money?
Yeah.
They was all put online. So, they had an application process, they had qualifications, it was, the winners were put online. In fact, some of the winners from the, that are going to come and present what they did with the money. They were kids, the money was given to kids, $500 for each kid, and each one was done. I just don't feel that we should be penalizing a business that's coming and saying, I want to do something for the community. Here's, they started with $1,000, but when they saw the applications, they opened it up and said, hey, we're going to give $3,000 to six kids because all the applications are so impressive. And I think if we get to a place where we start trying to govern what businesses want to do to give back to the community just because they don't have a 501(c)(3) status, I think we hurt ourselves, because it wasn't bad what they did.
I think there's a big difference there.
Yeah.
Because a for-profit enterprise is making money regardless of whether they're in business to make money. Every business that's in the world will make money. 501(c)(3) is not. They're not making money. They are giving free back. So, you know, if, in my sense is, it's, it's almost like giving the farm away for free in a sense. They're making money off of us, and I'm not saying let's charge them a bunch of money. I'm not saying let's try to make money ourselves, but we have to recoup some of those costs. And Wendy.
But we are.
I know, but, but what I'm saying is, they're using our event, we, we charge for Groff Park for, for business. So, you know, 501(c)(3), if they want to use that park, I'm, I'm for, hey, let them use the park. They, they, they're giving back to the community within this event. But a for-profit business, they are making money off of using our parks, so we're going to have to make them back.
Well, I'm a small business girl through and through. I think, you know, say this all the time, I think.
I know, you do, yeah.
I don't think there's anything wrong with having for-profit, and if organizations want to come, because we're losing. Like, if, if we don't open this square up and open up these spaces, where there is no feet, there is no economy, period. So, if we start putting in so much restriction that you drive people away, because it's like, it's so much, I mean, I'm for a, any business. I'm for nonprofits. I have a nonprofit. All I do is talk and raise money for it every single day.
At least it's the cost of doing business. There's a cost of doing business, and that's what this would be. It's part of the cost of doing business.
But that's what I'm saying, like, a nonprofit and a, regardless if it's 400 people being brought to the square for a profit or a nonprofit, it's the same 400 people. Everyone's paying their fair share. Like, the, the, the profits aren't asking for a special exception.
And I'm saying, it costs more than we collect despite what we say, because things happen to stuff. And if it's a nonpro, a 501(c)(3), maybe shouldn't have to pay for that because they are a community. They could make money, they just have to use it back for their, you know, their purpose for being. But that's not the case with a, with a for-profit enterprise.
I don't know, I think that's, for me, that's over-governing, but, because it's telling people, how, how are you going to spend your money? So, once you make money, how are you going to spend it? And if it's what I want, then I'll allow you to, and if it's not, then.
I think it is telling you how you're going, how you shouldn't spend my money.
Right, a viable business should.
That's what I think.
How is it spending your money, though? I guess that's what I'm missing.
The business should know what their costs are, and part of those costs are going to be kind. They, they need to be using open space. I mean, it, this public space, like Councilman Dane said, there is a cost to the city, a hidden cost for using those public state spaces with, with staff, Wendy, with.
But what, which part am I missing? Because I'm, when I see here, there's fees that everyone's paying their fair share. Or is, are you saying that the fees here aren't paying the fair share for the wear and tear?
So, council.
That's my, that's my question. So, I, I look at this process on how to apply for events, and the first step is going to Main Street, correct, or is it Wendy? Have we calculated the hidden costs of her going through all these applications, approving all these applications, taking them to council? I mean, how much time does that take? What is the cost in doing that? How are we going to reimburse her for that? Because it shouldn't be for free. She shouldn't have to do it for free, and the city shouldn't have to pay for the cost of her doing that. That's what I'm trying to say.
Excuse me.
We need to calculate that.
When the last festival, when they were requesting the German Festival, Katie said, if I recall correctly, and maybe it was a tad bit of an exaggeration, she said she had sent you about 100 emails, and maybe it was 100, maybe it was 99, but that's a lot. That's a lot of extra work for each event. So, that's what you're going with.
Correct. I mean, it, it's not, it's not natural. It's a hidden cost to the city. It's not like we see it right in front of us, but we can figure it out based off this for, how much time does she spend on these private events out of her day? Is it four hours a day? Is it, you know, four days a week? We don't know.
So, let me interject. And I'm, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of different things, but in reality, when I answer that, I thought that's what this was.
What, I mean.
That's what I thought. Yeah, because it has it here. It has all the costs, they have to pay for administrative fees, public works.
But the administrative fees, $150. Are we saying that Wendy's only doing $150 more?
No, but I think we also lose track of, it costs us money to have zero events.
Yes, you're, you're correct. It also costs us money when we're.
But we're also making, when we have an event on the square, for instance, the tax receipts go up, EDC gets, or MDD gets a cut, we get the tax revenue, so we're making money regardless. Again, I'm going back to the point, I don't want us to get lost. It's 400 people regardless of who's doing the event. If we need to raise the fees, I don't recommend we do, because I think that that doesn't serve the community. But if you're saying that you want to cover the cost for Wendy's salary to do events.
Well, wouldn't that be an incentive, the sales tax or say that's an increase? We don't have any way to track that. We have absolutely.
We will soon.
We don't know yet.
So, let me, let me, this is very confusing for me from a legal standpoint, because I've represented a number of cities. I, I think the policy question for the council is, do we want to rent Town Square? Or do we want to reserve Town Square for the city's use to promote its culture, businesses, and regional presence? And if it is, for example, a carnival that wants to set up, you'll notice they typically set up in private parking lots in, because it's a, it's a for-profit effort. I don't know cities that rent their public squares for for-profit activities. And I think that's the distinction between a rental policy and a special event that the city decides, we want to host for you. that the city decides, we wanna host for unique special events to benefit our local merchants. And so I think that's where I'm getting mixed up is, I think we're mixing up special events on the square and rental of the square. And I think those are two very distinct things. Because if you have a rental policy, you don't get to distinguish between who gets to rent. And I think what I'm hearing is, if you want, if you wanna distinguish between who uses the square, it is not a rental policy for the square. The square is marketed and events are, are administered through the town. And I think that those are really different things. And I don't know if you all can understand what I'm trying to explain. But if you have a rental policy for the museum, you don't get to distinguish between whether you like who's renting it or not. If you have a rental policy for a park, anybody can rent the park. But I don't, I don't perceive the public square as the same as a public facility. Because you own the park and there are no other property owners typically affected. So, I, I think that's where the confusion is. I think you have to decide whether you wanna rent the square or not.
I don't think we should rent the square at all. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm, what I'm trying to say is that.
Well, that's a big, that's a big statement.
Right.
And I think, I haven't understood that we've been calling special events things that may not be town-sponsored, community events that generate hotel occupancy tax, sales tax. Most cities operate their special events at a loss.
That's right.
And they do it for the secondary economic effects.
That's right.
But that's why you don't see private entities closing down Grapevine Main Street. The city decides, we wanna host Grape Fest, we wanna host this, this.
Wine walk or.
Yes. The, anybody can rent a facility. I don't think most cities allow anybody to rent their public square. So that's really the policy question. Is, do you wanna rent the square? Because if you do wanna rent the square, you don't get to distinguish between whether you like who's renting it or not. If what you want is the square reserved for special events, run sponsored, funded by the city for a, the public benefit, then that's different. Do you see the difference?
Yes.
Yes.
So I think the big question, the policy question is,
Do you wanna rent the square?
Do you wanna rent the square?
Yes or no?
I don't.
No. But then that's when we put the calendar together and decide what events happen.
That's right. That is a, if you, if you believe that is one of your greatest public assets, then you, you set aside funding for the number of events that you can afford. And you may start with one. And it may grow and it may then generate funds that support others. But it is, it is budgeted and funded because it is for the public benefit as determined by the council through its staff.
Well, then in that case, then we don't need to have guidelines because then what I'm hearing you say is the city's going to take on all of the events. So we will continue to use our sixty thousand dollars we have allocated and spend fifty thousand of it on Bonnie and Clyde. So we will have no more events on the square.
But you may.
Until we have the money to do it.
But someone may rent the gazebo. And maybe we have a way to distinguish between a special event and renting the gazebo.
Right. Cause that comes to no street closures, no police, no.
That's right.
So, I mean, I think it's foolish, but.
Dictate who gets to rent. It's first come, first served basis. Profit, nonprofit, it makes no difference.
Sure. So I just, I wanna make sure that everyone's clear because I'm, I think it's foolish for us to, to say, we're not gonna have any events. We're not gonna let private companies and organizations have events.
And I don't think that's what I'm saying. I'm saying if you believe it's important, you as a council need to fund.
Yeah, that we would have to fund it.
The marketing of it. Individual, for example, I've represented Ennis, Addison, Sunnyvale, Fate. They all have special events that they host. They invite vendors in, those vendors pay a fee.
The city does.
Yes.
Right.
And, and it's good for the community.
So let me make sure I'm understanding you. If a person comes up in November and puts an application in to have an event that means street closures and everything else, isn't that a rental? We're renting the square?
If that's what the council decides it wants to do. I.
But you can't say yes or no then.
That's right.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure everyone's understanding, cause I think I'm hearing you correctly, is you're saying by saying no, we don't wanna rent the square, we the dais, I don't agree, but the dais as a whole is saying, no, we don't wanna rent the square, then that means there will be no private events, closing streets, utilities, police, all of this.
But you can rent the gazebo.
But we can rent the gazebo. So gab and grab can continue with their forty people and eventually grow into a hundred.
And if you wanna, uh, you know, if you wanna put in electrical outlets and the necessary things to have a farmer's market.
Right.
That's something.
The city.
The city can decide to do. But it's not renting the square.
Right.
It is the city using, making a decision to use the square for the community.
So we're just going back to how it was last year, that the city was the only ones putting the events together. And, and that's how we're gonna continue moving forward.
I think that's the question because it, I mean, it's finally clear in my head that the question is, well, I hear this, well, who do we wanna let use it? Well, if you're gonna rent it, you don't get to say. If you're going to host your own events, then you have full say over when it happens, how often it happens, and how it's put on.
So we don't, so with that, if this dais says we don't wanna rent the square, then we don't need to have further discussion about special events or do we?
Discussions about rental policies.
Well, and I, I think, I under, I think what I understand Brenda to say is kinda what Ennis told us. When we talked about Ennis and they talked about Polka Fest, and I use that one cause I'm very familiar with Polka Fest. That, that is a organization that the city, they have like a board that helps the city get funding or whatever, but, but the city, Main Street Director is in charge.
Right.
But they, but Polka Fest has a private organization board, like Friends of Polka Fest type board.
And it's a five oh one C three.
And they are the ones that actually do all of the rentals and all of that, but it, but it goes all through Main Street and it's a city event that is supported by an, a nonprofit board, like Friends of.
That's right.
What about like a Blue Bonnet Festival there too?
That's purely city event.
Polka Fest is the only one I was familiar with from Ennis, but.
So when people are, just so that we understand how it looks like on paper, if it's something like that, let's, I'm gonna use the neighborhood group because that's the nonprofit we have right now doing events. So the city would contract with neighborhood events to do, to raise all the money and checks would be made out to the city of Pilot Point?
It's, it's not that the city is just the conduit for private activity. It's and, trust me, I understand, I'm trying to address a legal issue in an entrepreneurial context about activating the square. Because I understand this is about activating the square. And I think the dais, I hear consensus, we wanna activate the square, but we don't want it to be unlimited. And we don't wanna lose control over how many and when and what the purpose is. So for me, it sounds like if you wanna retain control, the city has to be the host. And at the end of the day, vendors pay a fee, they pay a percent of sales. Individual vendors may make money, like the person who comes and sells honey at the farmer's market. They're gonna make money. But the city hosts, puts on the farmer's market for the benefit of the community at large. And it's come one, come all. Okay? If there was, um, we're in horse country. If there was a horse association who's, you know, wants to put on a, a horse event and it's a national draw, it's a, a, an association that's tax exempt, five oh one C three, and you guys think that that fits with the personality, then you could, they could come and say, we wanna work with the city to have the city host this event and here's what we can do to facilitate it. You're still in control because you're hosting. They could bring forward a proposal. And that could be, you know, horse days becomes a thing. But in order to retain control of the square, I don't think you can have a rental policy for the square. Because that is squarely a First Amendment question.
I'm disappointed, uh, because I think it, it ties our hands. I think it's not looking forward to some of the bigger stuff, but at the end of the day, I'm one vote on the dais. So if all six members feel that we should not rent it and do, you know, take care of events through.
Brenda, let me ask you this. If we're not, if we're not charging for public use of the space, but we let a private entity use the space through a special event permit, does that mean that we're renting the square?
Yes. I'm gonna say yes. Because understand, even special events hosted by the city have admission charges. You know?
That's right.
Go to Kaboom Town in Addison. Well, Kaboom Town is actually free, I take that back.
But they charge for parking and.
Taste Addison, uh, Blue Bonnet Festival, and a number of the ones in Ennis. Fate Days was no charge because they're trying to draw people to downtown Fate. It depends on the nature of the venue. But you, I don't, you can let private entities rent the gazebo. Okay? You can have a rental policy for the gazebo.
We got that part.
But you can't, I don't think that, I don't know how you have a rental policy for the square that is not first come, first served basis and you don't, you are not allowed to distinguish between who rents it.
So you're saying that if we do that, if we let a private event use the square for free with a special event permit, we're renting the square, however, we can't decipher who comes and doesn't through the special, we, we, do we still have?
No, you haven't, I, I think you, if, if it is, if it's a rental and it's not hosted by the city, then it's gonna be a rental. Because you own the square. Um, and as a general rule, I don't like to think out loud. I like to have my thoughts organized. Um, but this distinction really just dawned on me this evening and it, in my mind became clear why there's such a struggle on the dais. Because there's a difference between deciding to host special events on the square and determining whether you wanna rent the square.
I, I think you went to what, Dennis and the board cities that you helped us from?
Denton, McKinney, and Ennis.
Okay. So with those three cities, I think it's really important to ask more pointed questions, hopefully they'll pick up to us, but I know you had mentioned Polka Festival, but how many, roughly how many events, other public you have here, if, if any, or private, sorry, not public.
Which, I will say, I, I don't know about Denton or McKinney, but we do have Ennis's previous city attorney sitting next to me. And so she can probably give us some.
Well, and Addison had four special events at Addison Circle.
Were those, but were those hosted by private companies?
No, no.
Something that they were done by the city?
Yes. Um.
Just thinking, um, of events that I've worked with and that are, the jazz festival's run by a poet and they take over the entire, you know, park for an entire weekend. Uh, Day of the Dead, which is all, uh, Hickory Street, that is a, that is a city event. Uh, there are Holiday Fighting Festival, which is the entire square. That is also.
Okay, so with that, we need to ask them, we need to ask them how they do it.
And how they distinguish between who they allow.
Because that's, that's the question. I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to a private company, companies having an ass on the square. But the last thing that I wanna do, on dais and I think the community and people on the same thing, is lose control of our square and have it become, excuse my French, bastardized by, by corporate entities, right? So I think there's a balance and we need, before we do anything, we need to have our stuff together and we need to know what we're doing.
Well, and in the beginning, you could have, you could have an RFP process, a request for proposals to use the square. And you could, you know, market that at, you know, the holiday craft fairs, the junior leagues. And you could have a six-month process to take RFPs for people who think that they could really use the square. And then you could select people to partner with the city, with the city hosting the event and, and them partnering with the city. I think you could do that.
I like that.
I like that too.
So then we could still have all of our events, but it would be through an RFP.
You could, yeah, you could do an R, and eventually, I think as, as the use of the square matures, you will settle into four, five, six big events that become signature for the community. And then other things will be smaller gazebo rental, museum rental, that kinda thing.
So would like a, RFP be like, uh, you know, we, we know Cinco de Mayo's great. We know, uh, like Oktoberfest, a, a July celebration, uh, December, you know, and then maybe just go out and look at those holidays and request RFPs?
You could, uh, you could do that. You could do that.
Have it in that timeframe of, hey, get your, uh, RFPs in. And then, then we could still have everything that we were wanting to do.
And I would just be curious in Denton, for example, Hickory Street, that may be something put on by the Hickory Street Merchants Association that is a private, you know, group of all of the merchants or something, but I'd be really curious about the use of public squares by, for, by private entities.
My favorite thing I heard tonight is I, I really like Pilot Point being the host of our square. I feel, that feels good. That feels like home. That's how we raised our children here and I think I wanna continue that.
Uh, I think what, the, the, if that's the consensus, the broader discussion then for the future is how do we, as a city, use the square as an asset for the community? how do we, as a city, use the square as an asset for the community? And I don't think that has been a purposeful, intentional discussion in light of some of these recent conversations.
And that's what it comes down.
It could be part of a strategic plan for the city to.
I will say, if you approve the budget as it is, there is a downtown planning, master plan that we are wanting to, to do next year.
Yeah. Yeah. So, uh, this may be growing pains, and guys, I apologize that I didn't, I didn't get the distinction before this evening.
That's why we talk it out.
Yeah.
Well, and for me, that's what it's about, is I don't, I don't think that the city, again, I'm a small government girl. I think we need to give it back to the community and let them do things. I think that, again, I think they do incredible work, and we should, it's their community. But at the end of the day, we're all voices for them, so whatever you all are hearing, whatever I'm hearing, we have to speak on behalf of the voices of the constituents, and the community needs to speak up and let us know, is this a gover, you want government to continue to, to do these events? You want, I mean, I don't know. I think it's a lot.
Um, what I'd like to do is prepare a legal memo for you all to sort of clarify what I've tried to express this evening, and do it in such a way that, um, you're not, you're not just taking my word for it, but that there is research. And look, I've lived long enough to know that I'm, I'm wrong a lot. Uh, I just wanna know whether I'm wrong, but I can tell you that what I've tried to express tonight feels correct.
And thank you for being so patient.
No, you all have been patient with me, and I apologize.
No apology needed. Very good. Um, we did have, um, Patricia Wheeler that wanted to speak on this. Do you still wanna speak on it? Okay. You have three minutes.
Do you want me to hold your camera for you?
I don't think your mic is on.
Hello?
There we go.
Okay, Patricia Wheeler's, sure, sure. Um, okay, so, uh, we had, uh, Wheeler events, and we did a person for the night. And I had a kind of sort of a question about when I was communicating in this case to make sure you're accurate with my name on it or, or it. Um, I only, God, as well, coming out during our business hours, um, in your, your time, at least, perhaps, I may be there. So it was a very, uh, uh, good conversation during the business hours. Um, the only thing I wanna say is, when you have, uh, the city doing the events, like the mayor mentioned, uh, he does not, he won't apply. Um, that one is coming from, uh, the taxpayers. In this case, like, one of my businesses, uh, we chase the money, we give them money, sometimes we might, uh, but anyway. Uh, so we chase the money, and we're trying to give back to the community. We are not, uh, helping, uh. Even though the poppets, they allow me to have a fifteen or a video, it's still giving somebody the money.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but then another, uh, uh, but what I'm gonna say is, when you have the city, you have to think about the concern. You're gonna have to use and pay for, the city has to pay the police department, the city has to pay the traffic, and usually these events don't have us. So you think, you have to think about overtime. At least we pay overtime when, uh, we have it as well. Uh, the police officer, um, mentioned also, they, you know, it's a kinda, you know, buy some money for that, you know, yes? And so, you have to think about this money, what is this money coming from? And not only the money, the men have, 'cause a lot of times the money comes easier than the men have. You know, so if these people wanna be able to, wanna work on a, on a, if these people wanna be able to, uh, wanna work on a single day or weekend, you gotta see holiday, you know? Those are holidays. You know, so you have to think about that. So you have to pay for that. Otherwise, like, in my case, you know, I chase the money, we pay them, and the money's coming from the businesses. And now, if you wanna make a decision, you don't have a lawyer, it's, it's, uh, by the city, you wanna have to have a think of it. I'm looking at this, uh, city of Salina here, and they have their calendar, they have all the events. And they have, they have about four events here, they're not run by the city, okay? So it's valuable, it's one of our, our resources. So all I'm asking is, if you're gonna make a decision, you really have to listen to the business officers, right? Because if you remember, Allison, we had, um, uh, General Store, she, they mentioned that having an event every weekend, she go, it makes forty, seventy-four cents. So you gotta present not only the season, but also the business hours, as well.
All right. Any other discussion on that? Nope. Okay, moving right along. Um, on the regular agenda, we are, um, not doing number one, so we're gonna move that off.